Tell me when you're all set.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So I'll just repeat that. Welcome to the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, Tompkins County Council of Governments meeting. We will start with any any quick updates, any additions to the agenda? Seeing now we'll move to the July twenty seven minutes. Would someone like to move approval of those minutes?
I'll move that.
Joanna, is there a second? Robert, any questions, comments? Whoops. Joel, did you say something, Joel?
No, just my phone went off.
Okay, all those in favor raise your hand or say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That carry? So we'll start with a report from county administration. I see Lisa is here.
Hi, thanks Rod, thank everybody. Um, just have a few updates from the county. Most notably, I think at the September nineteenth meeting of the legislature, I presented the recommended twenty twenty four budget proposal, um, which calls for a two percent tax levy increase. This was the um, the, the target that was set and requested by the legislature um, at a um, budget retreat earlier in, in the spring. Uh, we were able to achieve the two percent target, but with only with some very significant reductions in unfilled positions and other areas. Um, as the, as the budget went on, the news that kept breaking from Albany was worse instead of better, leading right up to a week before the presentation, um, we got some, some more um, just bad news about our mandates. So that certainly did not help. Um, and I can talk ad nauseam about those, but um, if adopted, this budget would mean um, a fifty-three dollar increase in the annual tax bill on a median priced home of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. It would also mean the reduction of about ten positions in the county's roster and the inability to maintain some of our current efforts. Um, the estimated property tax cap for twenty twenty four is three point five four percent. It is quite possible and, and advisable if we want to maintain some of our um, important efforts that um, the legislature um, reach or even exceed that property tax cap to maintain efforts. Um, so again, um, it's a tight budget because of primarily mandate increases from the state. There was a net increase of two point two million dollars in state mandates, which alone is equivalent to a four point two percent tax levy increase just off the bat. And uh, by definition, the county is statutorily required to provide and pay for those mandates, and yet we have no control over the cost. Um, the, the most notable um, mandate that was the increase was the EF map intercept for Medicaid costs by the state. We're also, uh, that was a one point six million dollar increase, which they are um, for Tompkins County, but they are forcing counties to absorb the full extent of those costs in one year. Despite being told that we would have a three-year phase in. Um, we're also seeing increases in safety net um, safety net cases locally. Um, those um, increases in Tompkins County are estimated to be over a million dollars in twenty twenty four. And the, a lot of that is due to the rise of individuals needing um, assistance uh, in emergency shelter. And we are also absorbing increases in assigned council rates um, and those for, for indigent defense. Um, those rates doubled in the last year um, and their state mandates. The state is covering fifty percent of the increase in those costs and counties are responsible for the other, the other half. Um, we're also um, are, are another major budget driver for us is our labor, labor costs determined in part, you know, in large part by our collective bargaining agreements. Um, we've also recently conducted a compensation analysis, which indicated several positions where market adjustments are needed to remain competitive. So um, so those are growing our budget in twenty twenty four. Um, of particular interest to this group, the budget also includes a proposal for the countywide EMS rapid response program. And as you know, um, we have applied for one grant already, the local government efficiency grant to cover the vehicles for that, for that program. And we're also submitting the um, countywide shared services grant um, to, to cover um, the first year of costs for those programs. We, um, tonight there's a public hearing on this in Newfield. October third is the public hearing and presentation at the legislature. And the public hearing in Lance, the town of Lansing is the eighteenth of October. So those are the required public hearings that we have to have prior to the submission of the shared services grant. Um, and um, we are also, uh, Mike Stately from the Department of Emergency Response is planning on presenting um, the, of the program to the legislature at the October third meeting. Something that we, we realize, um, if we do not receive the grants funding, if we see partial grant funding or to continue the sustainability in year two, um, we um, are going to need to consider um, cost sharing um, arrangements with the municipalities as the county, the full cost of the program um, will not be able to be entirely borne by the county. So that's something that um, we are in consideration of now, and the, the legislature is also discussing and has made very clear that um, we're, we're, we're going to have to think um, about, about the cost sharing and the sustainability of, of that program. Um, also, the, uh, the last thing I'll mention is that, um, at the September fifth meeting of the legislature, um, there was a vote to proceed with the um, the architectural and engineering plans for a center of government in the three hundred block of Tioga Street. And um, at the subsequent meeting, um, our legislature chair, Shawna Black, announced the formation of a downtown facility special committee to oversee the planning of the center of government and the um, options for departmental placement therein. So um, those are a lot of updates, just tucked into a few minutes. I'd be happy to pause and answer any questions anybody has.
Mark?
Thanks Lisa, I just, uh, small question. I, can you clarify what I, what's the date for the Lansing public hearing on the shared services plan? I had the nineteenth.
Oh, you had the nineteenth.
But I might be wrong, but.
Uh, I just had Bridget um, send me the dates and she's, she's sent me the eighteenth of October. Um, I will confirm that with her and I'll write it in the, the text chat there.
Great, thanks.
Uh, Dan?
Yeah, hi Lisa, just wanted to make sure I heard you right. So the funding for the EMS program would be put in the budget regardless of the status of the shared services grant, correct? Because you won't know the result of that grant until later in the fall or early in the winter.
Yeah, well, uh, that's, that's currently in, uh, up for debate right now with the legislature. The program itself is, um, was listed in the budget as an over-target request and it's not currently not, funding is not attached to it right now.
Right, but we, what's the expected notification date for the shared services grant?
Yeah, it won't be until mid-year twenty twenty four. So we're gonna have to have some more conversation about um, this, the startup for that.
Okay. So you're saying there may not be money placed in the budget for the EMS program?
That's correct.
Okay.
That, so I should state that the, the, I've, I've presented the budget, um, the um, departments and agencies within um, that are covered in the budget or had over-target requests um, have made presentations to the legislature. Last night was the third and final night of those presentations and then the legislature will go into um, voting meetings on the budget um, starting the second week of October. And so there will be further discussion on, on this and how what, whether and how much funding is attached to it.
So I guess one of our concerns would be whether the legislatures started to think that this program was contingent on the shared services grant and we never hoped that would be the case. I mean, we, we thought and we recommended to pursue the shared services grant, but not as a replacement. You know, just as, you know, maybe we'll get this funding, but it really should be in the budget. Um, how do you, I don't know if you can make suggestions to us, but how do we convey that to the legislature that we need to go back to our um, pre-shared services mindset uh, with this and, and not, not base the future on this program on the outcome of that grant?
Or I think that the, the conversation, that's a conversation to be had and a conversation also to start pursuing the um, models for um, cost sharing with municipalities for it. Because I think that it, given the constraints that um, the county is under with this, this um, in the twenty twenty four budget, it's not something that, that can be borne alone by the county, so.
All right, well, I, I know you're not, this is something we'll have to talk to legislators about, but if, if cost sharing were a possibility, we'd be solving that problem at the municipal level. Um, we're, we're turning to the county because it's, it's an unsustainable model right now to try and sustain this at the municipal level. So cost sharing is, is well, I don't know how, how much we can squeeze out of that lemon. Um, sounds like we need to talk to our legislators.
I'm gonna go in the order that I saw the hands, Joel and then Joanne and then Warden.
Question was unrelated to this and the others may be related.
Okay, so why don't we come back to, so Joanne, is it, are you commenting on this discussion?
Yes, yes. Um, so we're having a public hearing tonight. And I read through the model, the costing with the grants, and then after the grants are no longer applicable, what each individual municipalities' cost would be for this cost share in service. What happens if a municipality does not agree to go with the service? Will that, how will that rearrange all of the, the cost?
That's the exact question that the, that is being asked at the county level as well. And I, I don't have an answer for that.
Uh, Warden?
Yeah, Lisa, I appreciate the, uh, the update and the information and the detail. Um, I did catch wind of the cost share um, suggestion. And I would echo what Dan says. Um, obviously, it's, it's a legislative conversation or, or argument to be had, but just, you know, for your, and I know you probably are aware of most of this, but when we talk about cost sharing for EMS, particularly when we look at Truensburg, Dryden and Groton, we are bearing the millions of dollars of burden for EMS in Tompkins County as it is. And quite frankly, the two largest municipalities in Tompkins County, being the county itself and the city of Ithaca, are not paying anything for EMS services in the county. So I think the, I think that cost sharing is, is definitely a conversation we should have, we should start sooner with the municipal partners. Um, rather than, if possible, start sooner with the municipal partners rather than wait until a model is developed and then it's brought back to us for, well, what do you think of this? Because um, the whole, the whole purpose and point of this effort was, uh, again, to Dan's point, to say, here's a structure that is working, but sometimes barely. And we, and we need the county to assume a role that it has not previously played. Uh, and, and furthermore, for this, this is for the legislators. Um, there are three or four bills in the Assembly and Senate that I'm tracking currently, all of which talk about, speaking of mandates, all of which talk about creating a mandate for EMS as an essential service. All of them have the counties as being responsible for the provision. So I think getting ahead of that curve, knowing that eventually, whether it's in the next session or some future session, eventually that's going to happen. Um, I think we'd be all better off if we develop a model that works for us rather than waiting for that hammer to drop, because eventually it will.
Mark?
Is that me, Rod?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I just, um, I'm not sure I, I heard Joanne correctly, but if I just, it, it, um, I, I heard something um, to the effect of the um, that in the shared services document, um, there are numbers that indicate the municipal cost share. And we, in our public hearing here in Caroline, that was a confusion um, that um, that a lot of uh, the um, people in attendance had. So I think it's important to um, point out that those numbers are not intended to, to be cost shares for each municipality. Um, those numbers were um, numbers developed to, to say what it would cost each municipality if they stood up their own rescue service or ambulance service alone, um, compared to the countywide shared, shared services option for either rescue or ambulance. So um, so the document doesn't, it doesn't speak to um, what the ultimate impact would be um, for a municipality. So we, we, we had that confusion and I, I wanted to offer that.
Thank you, Mark, for pointing that out. That's, that is um, in the shared services applications. Um, that's required to demonstrate the cost savings of doing it in a shared model versus each municipality standing it up on its own. So thank you for pointing that out. And also, Mark, Bridget did confirm with me that that um, the public hearing is the eighteenth of October. Um, a, a previous date was shared before that was um, in air.
Ah, okay. Thank you, Lisa.
And um, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that some of this discussion can continue in the emergency planning and preparedness committee?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Joe? Joe Batmore?
There we go, I got myself unmuted. Um, the only numbers that I've been given so far are the numbers of how much it would cost Lansing if we tried to go on our own. I have not seen numbers of how much if we're part of the shared services. I've not seen numbers if Lansing's expected to kick in, you know, some of what the state doesn't do. And we need to start having those discussions now. I need to know what you're thinking Lansing is going to be able to put into this if we're gonna start, you know, figuring out how to fit it into our budget.
Yes, agreed. And we, we are, we're trying to work on that as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Don?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the taxpayers in Groton can afford a whole lot more. Right now, uh, the way our budget looks, uh, it wouldn't happen this year.
There, Ted? Uh, Ronnie?
I just wanted to point out that by moving the costs from the municipalities to the county, either by voluntarily moving it to the county or an unfunded mandate, all of the municipalities residents are going to be paying more in accounting taxes to support this service. So you're not going to get off scot-free uh, in each of the municipalities. Uh, to, to incorporate higher costs and more higher costs for all of the unfunded Monday mandates is going to cause probably the county to have to exceed their tax cap and pass all of these additional costs onto the county taxpayers. So don't think that just because you're moving it out of the municipality, your residents won't be impacted, because my suspicion is they all will.
Uh, so Lisa, I think you're hearing loud and clear, uh, that there's questions and concerns. So Mark, I don't know how soon that committee might be able to come together and follow up with Lisa or whoever to go into more depth on some of these issues. Um, but I'm assuming you, you or Warden can make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, um, our next meeting will be, I think it'll be the thirteenth of October, but I, I know that um, Lisa and Mike Stately are um, also, as she said, diving in on this on their own, so, yeah.
Okay, uh, so Joe, you had something unrelated to that to ask or comment on?
Yeah, it was the, the Center of Government Building, and I wondered what the um, um, what the, what the status is of the discussions about parking. Um, just pointing out, out that when the um, Social Services Building was built, a lot of um, buildings were demolished just to provide parking for the adjoining building. And it's kind of a suburban model in an urban context. And I wonder whether there had been any thought given to collaborating with the city, maybe on a parking garage or, or maybe just the county incorporating parking into the building?
Yeah, parking is um, it has been a uh, an adjunct discussion that we've been having uh, related to this and the um, uh, we, we recently did a, 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 a document, a downtown facilities um, planning document that was looking at the cost benefit of several options um, for um, the space needs of downtown facilities. Parking was one of those um, uh, parking was a factor. It was not a deciding factor, but it was certainly a factor in, in those, this discussions and the um, the need to accommodate parking for the public and parking for um, the staff a full third or um, maybe over a third of whom are commuting in from out of the county um, to, to work. Um, so, so yes, that, that is um, certainly on people's radar.
Okay, other questions or comments for Lisa? Then moving on then, um, I, I've missed a couple of meetings, uh, so I had, I've imagined that the discussion has continued about the broadband access plan. But I know that uh, before this meeting, it was sent out the expanding broadband access plan dated August thirtieth, and we have uh, we have both Nick Hemmelt here and members of ECC here, so I'm not sure how to, well, Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Rod. Um, yeah, hello, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, I'll just be kind of introducing this and uh, uh, giving a bit of a context of how, where we are. Uh, so over the last uh, year, the Tompkins County has been working with ECC Technologies in the development of the uh, plan that was sent out to this group uh, and shared previously with the uh, county legislature via the uh, Housing Economic Development Committee. Uh, so this plan represents sort of a, a milestone in our understanding of the situation and our uh, understanding of the options that are available at the county level to address it. So uh, it's a very detailed plan. I encourage you, if you have the time and inclination to, to uh, sit down and, and, and really give it a thorough look over. Um, there, I, I, I'll say in my review of it, I, I certainly learned things and uh, found it very informative. Uh, most significantly, the plan lays out five options available to the county for uh, ways to address the unserved uh, addresses, locations, uh, primarily residential locations uh, within the county uh, to ensure that high-speed uh, reliable internet is available to those spots. Um, I'm gonna pause there, because otherwise I'm not gonna leave a lot for Mark and Justin uh, to, to talk about. Mark and Justin are here from ECC Technologies, uh, and uh, if you'll uh, allow them, I think they're gonna give a, a bit more of a detail on the plan and what's inside of it.
Uh, yeah, sure, thanks, Nick. Uh, hi everyone, my name's Mark Meyerhofer, Director of Broadband here at ECC Technologies and um, you know, as Nick said, the plan was presented to the county legislature in uh, September. And uh, just a few highlights of it, uh, we've been through our uh, review of all the unserved addresses, we identified a little over twelve hundred that are unserved. Uh, and again, unserved means they are under uh, twenty-five megabits per second download by three megabits per second upload. So that's the unserved uh, definition. And um, with, along with that, that equals approximately a hundred and twenty-one miles. So from there, uh, the report goes on, as, as Nick had mentioned, to uh, offer five options to the county legislature. I'm sure you're all familiar that the RFP was, was released as well at the beginning of uh, September. And that uh, we're still uh, waiting for all the responses to come in. It's not due till uh, October sixteenth, so those uh, those typically don't come in early, I know that, but uh, none, none of them will be open anyway, even if they did come in early until the uh, the deadline. So we have gotten uh, some questions from, from some uh, internet service providers, so that's good. The, the, uh, that means there's uh, there's interest out there and that's the whole point here, and that's why it was uh, the setup the way it was. So getting back to the report, uh, you know, a lot of the maps and uh, service providers um, are listed in there in terms of um, where the service is, uh, there's a little bit of a history of it and the, the appendices, it kind of goes through some steps that have been made in Tompkins County through various programs over the years to, you know, sort of remind people that, you know, despite the lack of um, you know, progress towards that hundred percent goal, right, where everyone has internet access. Uh, there has been some progress made, in particular, over the last three to five years. So, you know, we wanted to point some of that out as well in the, in the report. And uh, as I said, we uh, we, we end with a conclusion there about uh, the best path forward. Uh, and that was uh, releasing an, an RFP for providers. So then from there, uh, we'll have a, a solid number. So uh, our estimate is seven, sorry, just checking something here, yep, seven point three million. Uh, that's our estimate to serve these twelve hundred unserved. Um, you know, in our experience with other counties, our, our numbers are typically very close to what um, uh, the providers will, will put on the table. Some are, are less, which is uh, you know, music to everyone's ears when you hear that they're less. Um, that's typically because they, um, they have a, a large footprint in a certain part of the county. Um, so along with that, uh, of course, uh, this was uh, released several months ago, was the VAT uh, survey, the uh, broadband availability and adoption tool. Justin is, is here, of course. He led those efforts on behalf of BCC Technologies. And certainly, um, here to answer, you know, Justin's here to answer questions related to that, but that um, that is referenced in the report. Um, but it is not, it's not included, because we had already, you know, already submitted that to the uh, county legislature. I'm sure everyone uh, here is, is familiar with that. Uh, so with that, that's um, that's a quick uh, overview of the report and certainly open any, any questions anyone has.
Joe?
It's uh, Joel and. I've got, yeah, I got. Yeah. Took too long to unmute. Um, well, I mean, I, I, I read the report that the uh, there are several questions that, that, that came to my mind as I did so. Um, one, you're, early on in the report, it was identified that uh, a high percentage of, of the population of the county um, regarded the lack of competition as an issue. Um, and I don't see that being addressed in, by any of the options, really.
Yeah, what, uh, that's, that's a great question, Joel. So when, uh, we also assisted, you may be aware of this, we also assisted uh, the county with um, the formation of that RFP uh, and how that would look. And one of the ways we did that was to divide the county into nine zones, each zone as a town. Um, and what we've seen and have been successful in other areas, not only in New York State, but in other states, when these are released in the, in the counties, by dividing it up into zones, you're, in, in essence, encouraging other providers to go in and bring uh, you know, their service potentially and potential, you know, uh, competition, right? That's, that's the hope here, is that we get other providers to come in, they build out their network, that then provides uh, competition for them uh, to build out the other areas. Now, you do need to keep in mind that with the goal being to get to the unserved, um, there's, there's also a reason why that's done uh, from a, you know, financial standpoint, if you will, because the BEAD funding uh, it's $664 million that New York State received. Right? That's going to be the main, we believe, the main vehicle to to kind of close the gap between what providers are willing to put towards these, the the build out of their network. And, you know, what the county and or state will put towards it. So the reason I bring up BEAT is because the first money out the door, if you will, for needs to go to unserved, that's a requirement. So you know, once that's done, again, the hope is that they will then, now that they've built out their network further, that they'll get to some of the underserved, or maybe even will pass the underserved, which is again, tends to be a competitive area. And the underserved is the ones that are between 25, 3 and 100 by 20. So the hope here is that you'll get these providers that will then create competition as we, you know, once, once we move down that path.
Mark, I might also add that in the report, pages, looks like page 38, where the options and recommendations starts, each one of the options has a subheader under it to discuss the opportunities and benefits or drawbacks and competition is listed in those. So we definitely thought about it in 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 that context as well.
So Joe, do you want to continue with your questions, or do you want me to go on to someone else at this point?
Well, it's kind of up to you, but I do have.
How many questions? How many questions do you have?
Oh, about four.
Okay, go ahead.
The the coverage of satellite didn't didn't seem to include Starlink, which has been become an option that that is more satisfactory than traditional satellite. Was that exclusion because it wasn't available at the time, or or is there some other reason?
Starlink was primarily excluded because they were, the FCC has has now considered them not sufficient to meet the speed requirements. They were, as you may know, they were initially awarded ARDOF funding, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund funding, but that has now been rescinded in large part because they couldn't prove that they were able to to provide the speeds that the federal government's requiring for this. Now, you know, certainly subscribers to Starlink may may disagree with that or may have data in that arena, but they're basically not considered a high-speed broadband option at this time. So they've been they've been left off of, you know, this type of report.
But traditional satellite is?
I'm sorry?
But traditional.
Oh, the Houston? Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, you you bring up a valid point, Joel.
Okay, keep going, Joe.
Oh, let's see. The the let somebody else do a question, you know.
Okay, Robert?
Yeah, I had several. First, for somebody ECC maybe can answer this. It's a data accuracy question. Our county legislator, Randy Brown, presented us a very detailed map of Enfield, and it is basically a blow up of page seven of your report. And it shows that one of the prime areas that Enfield is underserved with households not right served right now is right down my road, gray road. And here I am. I'm on Hayfley Cable Internet. I took the broadband test. It tested at about 197, 98. I participated in the survey, said I had broadband. But somehow or other, everybody on my road is listed as unserved, and that Hayfley Cable goes right down that road. So it's something you might want to check into. Secondly, you're recommending and the county has recommended option one. I have a hard time distinguishing option one from option two. And maybe you can provide some explanation of that.
Yeah, sure. So so option one is your traditional RFP, right, that you go out and it's competitively bid and and you get responses from that. Whereas option two is almost a fallback position. Let's say you put an RFP out and there's one bidder. Well, maybe you then just have to enter direct negotiations, or you've already had, more likely, you've already had some kind of conversations with the different broadband providers, and they've all said for one reason or another that they they would not would not be interested in in pursuing any sort of, you know, RFP or funding of of any nature, but you do have one that will do that. And there is an example of that up in Lewis County where that occurred, where Lewis County was was, I would say, satisfied with the provider they wanted to go through. So they worked directly with one of the broadband providers to do a partial build in their county. So that's a good example of, you know, what we call a direct negotiation when you really only have one that's that's willing and able to do it.
Okay. But the concerns voiced at a prior meeting is that there's one particular ISP provider that a lot of people in Tompkins County, a lot of leaders in Tompkins County do not like. And I wondered if using option two might help circumvent that unwanted internet provider and go with someone else. Is that an option?
I I would imagine, I kind of almost want to defer to the county personnel here, but I mean, I I would imagine that's that's certainly an option, right? I mean, it's I think it's going to really depend on what type of responses we receive back.
Yeah, that that's that's what I was thinking, Mark, is it's really going to be a fact, you know, as we have the RFP out there right now, it's going to depend on what comes back out of that. And and what the sort of decisions and next steps are following the results. So we'll get those results in mid-October.
And the third question I have quickly is that at the last presentation a couple of meetings ago, the real desire of a lot of T-COG members was for what is now option five, because it wasn't really fleshed out at that time. And it was predicted to be expensive, and your study indicates it is expensive. And to those who had previously advocated for option five, which is a county-run municipal broadband network, what has been the response to that? Is it just too costly?
Yeah, generally, yeah, too costly, not only to the at the outset, but a long-term O and M operation and maintenance of that network and ability to compete. And and I know Joe Starks, our the President CEO of ECC, had had mentioned on a previous presentation that despite the 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 fact that you'd point out that, you know, there's there's a lot of disgruntled customers of a major broadband provider in in Tompkins County. Despite that, it's not as easy as 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 others think to draw those those customers away, right? Sure, you'll get 20 and 30% that might jump at the chance right away. But it's not going to be 60 and 80% in a competitive area. That's just that's just how the numbers work out. So you know, that all feeds into the calculus of, well, is this a recommended way of doing it? It's not just that upfront cost, which is substantial. It's the ongoing operation, maintenance, upgrading of that network, and the ability to attract those customers to make it, you know, a successful endeavor.
Might want to ask Dan Lamb at this point, how's things going in Dryden with your Dryden Municipal Broadband?
Okay, Dan, go ahead. It's your questions anyway.
Yeah, so thanks, Rod. And yes, as part of the reason I had my hand up. I like the plan. I like how you inventory a lot of the assets and the challenges in in the county. Our concern in the town of Dryden all along has been our already started project, which is essentially option five for the town of Dryden. You know, we're we're already several million dollars into this project. And, you know, we don't want to be in competition with anyone else that's municipally sponsored. And my concern is that this conflict will get sorted out during the RFP process once you get proposals in, rather than having this figured out upfront. And there's a lot on the line for the town of Dryden, town of Dryden taxpayers in this regard. So we we've wanted a carve-out all along. I'm not sure if we're getting one. I'm not sure if in your review process, you're going to keep that in mind. But, you know, if you're awarding this RFP to a group that wants to serve the town of Dryden, then we have a problem. We have a problem if you go after USDA reconnect money while we're going after USDA reconnect money. I, you know, just as as intermunicipal cooperation, intergovernmental relations, this is a disaster in the making. And and so I guess I'd like to hear your response to this now, not after all the proposals are in, because yes, the town will submit a proposal to hook up everybody within the town to drive the lines. The town of Caroline wants to work with us. They like our model. So let's not, you know, do anything to damage an effort that's already underway. I mean, we've been at this four or five years now. So I guess this goes to to Nick and to Mark and to Justin. You must know about our project. Nick, I know you do. How are you approaching the town of Dryden's work?
Dan, I think I can jump in here. Just wanted to let you know, we are well aware of the Dryden and somewhat Caroline potential conflict and tricky situation aspect of it. It certainly complicates this RFP pretty dramatically from the county perspective. And we do have some legislators who will be on the RFP selection committee so that we can get perspective from many sides. Lauren, who's the Director of our ITS Department, is also on the RFP committee. So it will be part of the conversation. I can guarantee you, everybody is well aware that it's an issue that needs to be grappled with.
That's an answer. I appreciate it, but I got to I got to report back to my people with a little more assurance that, you know, you know, you it's there's a lot on the line here, Katie, and and, you know, I guess I would have liked something upfront on this, and that's what we've been asking for about this before the process got underway. And if you come up with a decision that, you know, harms the town, we're going to be you know, in a really bad position ourselves. If you go with a a county-wide provider and they want to serve the town of Dryden, that would be a disaster for our project.
I mean, ultimately, it's a legislative decision. It's not my decision. So I think they're waiting to see what the numbers look like, and then that will inform the decisions that they need to make. So I guess I can't speak on behalf of the legislature.
I guess what I I would really want, and and maybe it's too late, but I would have liked something upfront, a recognition of the town of Dryden's project and and a carve-out that, you know, special consideration will be given to service as it applies to the town of Dryden, something to that effect. I don't know how this slipped by. It's something that we wanted. But now I feel like we're really exposed in in this regard. And and the stakes are very, very high for us.
So Dan, I don't think you're going to get any. I think you've heard the answer you're going to get today.
Turn down the camera isn't going to do it.
I don't think so.
I will say your concerns are noted, and I will be sure to bring that to the legislators who are on this committee to make sure we have clear discussion and understand the potential ramifications of any decision to the town.
All right. Thank you.
So Robert, were you done? I know you deferred to Dan. So then, Mark, I think I saw your hand. It was probably about the same thing that Dan spoke about. Maybe not.
Who? Who, me?
Yes, sorry. Yes, Mark.
No, I well, I I think Mike Murphy had his hand up here. So but I might have a little, I I guess I would just say hearing Dan's concern and thinking about this, I I think what occurs to me is you know, what's different about option five is that it addresses it it addresses costs down the line to to the customers, that at least it has that potential to do that. And so it's it's almost like it's a different animal. So it's it's, I think that's what creates a real difficulty there. So I I will just offer that. I mean, I think that's why Dryden's so bullish on this, and that's why Caroline's interested. It's it's, you know, it's pushing things to a different way of of doing things that we hope will and, you know, enhance the interests of of customers countywide. So but that's all.
Okay, Mike?
I guess my concern is the RPI people that are going to be going after it, except for the town and Caroline, are going to be by profit organizations. And for me, that means they have control. They're going to have a monopoly as far as I'm concerned. And I think it's better if in the town in Caroline that the they control it by the government because they're not profitable. They're just trying to make their end, and that's a better benefit. And one of the things I I hated about Time Warner and is, yeah, you have agreement with them, but you can't get anything out of it because they're a monopoly and what can you do? And I'm opposed to having monopoly. I'm opposed to it's not going county-wide, having a government control it. It's a nonprofit organization. But if we're going to have that RPIs, I think it shouldn't be in the areas where they're proposing to provide the service for a nonprofit organization, which is the government. I think that's better for our community, and that's better for it. It makes it more competitive for the other people because they can look and say, hey, if we would have gone this way, we would have less costs, lesser costs. We wouldn't have all these increases. And it could expand at some future date that maybe some other area would go with governmental be to be competitive with the profit one. But I think we, whenever we can have something that's nonprofit, that's going to provide a great service, it's better for our people than having them have a monopoly with a profitable organization. And that's one of the things that the federal government is looking into, that we're allowing so many places to be monopolized. And I I think us to encourage it is bad. That's all. If I didn't lose myself.
Okay, anyone else want to weigh in or ask questions? Joe, we're back to you.
It's a practical question. It was, you know, some of these providers are are doing it on a cable network and others are doing it with optical fiber. How is that? How is that? I couldn't see how that was sort of addressed in the RFP process.
If you give me a moment, unless Nick or Katie knows off the top of their head, I thought we gave, I thought there was preference for fiber in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too. I don't have it, you know, committed to memory is it's but my general recollection of it is that we stated a pretty clear preference for fiber optic connections, and I'll double-check that.
Can they be made, can it, just a practical question, if you extended service to unserved using fiber, could that cannot be made to interface with the cable network if if that's if that's a provider?
Well, what cable providers, what they are, they already have fiber as part of their network. So generally, what, right? So I I guess I'm not sure what the question is, Joel, because cable already has both in their network. They have both fiber and coaxial. Typically, the coaxial comes down the street, a residential street, and fibers down main roads. Also the businesses.
Okay, well, I guess I didn't know whether or not, you know, how much of the existing network is fiber as opposed to cable and not, whether there are not areas like mine, where the only thing going is is the is the cable and the fiber is not there to to extend.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, the the Plan is typically, I don't wanna speak for the Tompkins County here, but, uh, typically we as ECC recommend. That any solution is fiber, right, because we. That is, you know, what you're calling is, you know, future-proofing the system in essence, right, because. You're going to continue and you're gonna invest this and have a subsidy on top of it. To a potential large corporation, right, you wanna be able to say, well. You, it has to be fiber, right, and require that, and otherwise, um, you know, they don't get the award, right? So, uh, we, we always recommend that because, you know, you need to take a step forward, whereas, you know. If you're doing coaxial cable, you're standing still in essence, right? So that's, that's typically. How we do it as, as consultants is make sure that the county is making sure whoever the bidder is, that is a full, an all fiber build. Not a mix of, of technologies.
Yeah, uh, just, uh, peeked in the RFP here. Um, under our program, our job, program objectives, we list a desired speed of 100 megabytes. Download and 100 megabytes upload is preferred, so that would effectively be a, a fiber to the home, fiber to the premises type of solution.
Basically precludes the cable.
No, it, it, that's a, that's said as the preference, the minimum is, is, um, uh, 100 megabytes down and 20 megabytes up. Um, so, and recognizing that there may be limitations for different, uh, uh, you know, bidders out there, so. But certainly our preference would be the, the fiber to the premise.
Joel, did you have any other questions?
Well, the other, the other issue, which I think I've made, I've raised before is that, uh, you know, the, the most expensive part of any system is going to be extending. The, 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 uh, the, the service to those who are currently unserved. It's, it's why they're still unserved. Because they're, you know, in less densely populated areas. And, uh, if one were down the line, uh, going to do something municipally. You'd have to duplicate that same investment. Uh, in order to provide, you know, in order to, to, to serve those same residences. And, and, you know, it is a different form of public-private partnership. Is there, has any thought been given to? Possibility of, of building it, well, actually, it's one of the options, as I recall, but I didn't see how, what, how it been addressed as a possibility. Of having the, 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 the extended part of the, of the, of the service be owned and then. And then leased or otherwise, you know, used by IS, in the service providers. Uh, including maybe the main one in the area, but, but, but not necessarily limited to it. Uh, with the thought that by and by, um, you know, it could be connected up to a, 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 a larger or, or different service. In the event that, for instance, uh, just to be specific, you know, Dryden is wildly successful. And, um, and the service is extended into Caroline and then into Danby and then into Newfield and then, you know, who knows? That, that one would, in order to do that cost-effectively, uh, you would do, you, you would service the most. Populated areas first, and the hard part is getting those outlying parts. And here we are investing public money to extend service to those things, but the lines that they're, that they were, that were subsidizing, extending. Um, are owned by the providers in the end, um, which bothers me a little bit. But the presumption, I presume, presumptuous presume, the presumption, I think, is that, um, it would cost more if they didn't own it. You know, they're providing part of the cost, uh, and it'll be interesting to see how the RFP comes out. Uh, whether, how much of the, of the, of a subsidy it, it turns out to be compared to what it would cost to have it. Extended if it were not, um, subsidized by anybody, but.
So I, I don't know if there's a question in there, but is there any response from ECC or Nick, and then we'll go to Don?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say to that, Joel, is, um, I think really the, the model that. Tends to create more competition is the open access, right, option four, the middle mile. Um, but that even that is a, um. It, it doesn't create as much competition as people think, right? It's not as if 10 providers are going to now say, oh, there's a fiber backbone. I can go and, and provide service to these areas, because in many cases, um, the, to your point. The highest cost is that last mile, um, and that's what they still need to do, right? They need to get on that fiber backbone and then go and build out. So STN has been, been successful, um. There's, uh, more successful, uh, open access networks in, in other states, uh, than there are in New York state. But STN and Dank, um, the, up in the north country, uh, Slick. Um, is one of the ISPs that uses that network, but, but again, it's not as if you're getting, you know, five and 10 different options. And you're creating, uh, all kinds of competition. Um, it's a slow process, unfortunately, when, when these networks come out, and typically the larger providers will not, uh, use an open access network. But, uh, yeah, that's, uh, I don't know if that kinda helps and give you some more to think about in terms of, you know, how do we do this? How do we go about doing it? I know, um, you know, certainly STN and others, uh, Central New York for that matter, um. They, they would, they have a proposal for a middle mile network that unfortunately didn't get funded through. An NTIA grant process from earlier this year, but again, these, if you can. Get the funding for those type of open access networks or to extend them, that ultimately would help with competition, um. To, to a certain extent anyway.
Good, Don?
Uh, well, at the, in. I guess what I have to say is, uh, generally, anything that the government does to try to take over private industry or, or commerce. With the idea of saving money generally does turn into a disaster in the making. It ends up being more expensive, uh. We're on our second project tonight already that we don't know. We don't have the answers to how to pay for it and how to make it work and, and be more cost-effective, so. I, I don't see it as working. Think there's too many things, too many things working against it, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Is there anything else to say about this at this point?
Hello?
Hi, Mike.
Uh, I guess my question, you kind of implied you'd like to go with fiber, but you implied that. Cable can do the hundred up and a hundred down.
Uh, 100, 100 up and, and 20 down is, is typically what we see is a maximum for cable, is my understanding, and Mark or Justin.
You said you needed 100, 100, and you kind of implied that maybe cable can do that. Can they do it or not?
Hmm, well, they are introducing it in certain markets, uh, like, um. I, I don't know what, uh, Spectrum's plans are in Tompkins County, but as an industry, I can tell you this. There, they are moving towards that symmetrical speed over a coaxial network. Um, it's called DOCSIS 4.0, it's the, it's the data that's behind, you know, the modem, it's, it's the modems that provide that, that speed and the. In addition to what they do to their, their network out on the roads, if you will, so the cable industry is moving towards that. Um, again, you'd have to find out from Spectrum how soon they're going to do that. If I had to guess, I would say by, um. You know, three or four years from now, um, that will be rolled out across the state, but that's, that's kind of a guess on my part. You'd have to check with Spectrum.
Well, I guess what I'm leading up to is can't we restrict it just, it has to be fiber? We don't wanna consider cable. For the RPI, then we know we have the best new technology that's gonna go ahead. And it's, it's here now, fiber's here. As opposed to going with something that might happen four or five years from now, if it's profitable for them to bring it in. And, you know, what's to restrict us from not making it restricted now just to fiber?
I, I think it's just, you know, comes in our procurement, um, policies at this point. We've already released the, uh, solicitation. Uh, so editing it or, you know, making a substantial revision at this point would probably cause us to have to restart the process. Um, I'll also say.
If it's to correct it and make it right, I don't, I don't see the end of that, you know? We've waited for years for all these people not getting anything, and to do it right, if we start forward, because it sounded like it was the good way to go. The smart move is, hey, this is a better than what we said, let's change. And, and I, I don't know about anybody else, but to me, I, I think we should go with fiber and. Then we know we have the best.
And if. The other answer to you, Mike, is that, um, I think it, it has to do with, uh, cost as well, um. So if there's one house at the end of a long road that could be served with slightly less than perfect fiber. But still get a great service, that's something that we wanted the option to consider. Um, we're already looking at a, probably a minimum, there could be a million dollars worth of county dollars that would have to go into this. Even just to build out this option one, if we succeeded in getting grants, it's, this is an expensive proposition. And so I think the legislature wants to have a breadth of options to be able to see what comes back from the private market.
My question to you is, can the fiber be down the land, on, down the road? And if they have a long run and it's very expensive, can they, or cable? Out to the fiber line that's going the trunk? Can that be done? Cause you were saying that was the main reason to go with that, because it would be cheaper for somebody that has instead at 50 feet to get in the house, he's got 200 feet. And the fiber's gonna be so expensive, we'd rather do cable. My question is, can the cable be hooked to the fiber?
Yes, yes, and that actually speaks to Katie's point when she said, um, you know, if, if the only option is a coaxial cable. You know, off of fiber network, well, in, in many cases, that's probably better service than they currently have. That house probably has, uh, access to DSL service, um, which is nowhere near what you need. And in today's, uh, market, let alone years from now, um, uh, or satellite for that matter. Um, so you have to remember, as much as you wanna do fiber for future-proofing it, um, on a. A coaxial cable system, I believe this is entirely around the country. It's not just spectrum. They can do up to a gigabit per second download and 35, tend to be 35, it could be up to 50 upload, uh, a little change by carrier, but. Um, so their, their download is certainly substantial for today's market, um, but again, fiber's always preferred, but. They, they would have a much better option, that one that's, you know, 200, 2,000 feet, whatever it is, uh, that, that house. Uh, that's off of a fiber network would still have a better option than they do today, in terms of.
Question then is, can the trunk be required to be fiber and from the fiber to the house? Uh, have the option of cable or fiber? That would solve two worlds. Then at some later date, fiber became a necessity, the trunk would already be there coming down the street. And 10 years from now, when you have to do that, they would be able to hook up to it with fiber. And maybe the cost would be less or more practical, but, you know, you, the answer she said was, yes, you could hook the cable to it. Cause if I'm 300 feet away, uh, it would be much cheaper than going with fiber, but coming down the trunk, I'm sure it's more cost for fiber, but. If we required that to be fiber, then let the other thing dictate by what the cost is for hooking it up to the individual house.
Yeah, Mike, I think, uh, the great thing about this RFP review process is we can ask all those questions. Whenever the providers submit all those, that, those pieces of data to us, we can see exactly what their plans are. Ask them questions about all that future-proofing and all that stuff, and if we don't like what they have to say, or we don't like any of those. Well, then we move on to one of the other options. It's not an end-all be-all.
So who's making that decision?
There's an RFP process review committee.
So I'm gonna suggest we move on, um, I'm not sure that.
Yeah, I'm done with my questions. I'll let it go.
Okay, so I think we're, we're, we're move on, um. So I see we have a resolution before us, uh, urging Governor Hokel to veto pending legislation that would impact the timing of the local. Elections. Bob, do you wanna speak to this?
I'll first, I'll, I'll move it to get it on the floor, uh.
Is there a second?
Number, one, one, nine, one, six. Uh, and I will speak to it briefly.
Uh, and is there a second, uh, or?
I'll, I'll second it.
Uh, great, okay, go ahead.
All right, um, the history of this was, uh, as you may have read and you may know about it. Uh, in the, uh, last hours of the New York State Legislature back in June. Uh, the state senate and assembly largely on party line votes, uh, approved a. Proposal, a law that would move all local elections, uh, most county elections. But not for sheriff, for county clerk, or, uh, a few offices, but all county legislative elections. And all town municipal elections from the current odd year cycle to an even year cycle. And it would kick in beginning in about 2025. And, uh, there's been a lot of pushback on this, including from our Tompkins County Legislature. Uh, which voted back in mid-June by a vote of 10 to four. To urge Governor Hokel to veto this measure. Just, uh, earlier this month, about mid-September, the New York State Association of Counties. I'm, understand unanimously recommended the veto of this proposed law. Uh, a number of county legislatures around the state and a lot of municipal boards around the state have done the same thing. And the reason why so many municipal. Boards and leaders are pushing back on this is because there are a whole lot of good reasons for keeping. The election years for local offices where they are, and not a whole lot of good reasons for moving them to the same. Years as governor and president. Uh, among the arguments made is locally, it would overwhelm boards of elections on even years. And leave them with virtually nothing to do in odd years. As our Deborah Dawson of the Tompkins County Legislature said, um, the, uh, she said that. In, in even years, the boards of elections will be busier than one-armed paper hangers. But in odd years, they will be eating bonbons. And the election commissioners have come out against it, uh, they say things should be where, left where they are. And another point, and I think this is the most important point. Is it will diminish the importance of local elections in the public's eye. Yes, in years when the governor is on the ballot or the president is on the ballot, more people may vote. Lot of them may not even vote down ballot for town offices. Furthermore, they will be, the, the messaging of any candidate for supervisor, for town council person, for. Highway superintendent, it's gonna be lost in, in, in the, in the mass of confusion of all. The politics being waged with these higher offices. So that's why I proposed it, um, 10 members of the county legislature here supported it. And the New York State Association of Counties supports it, and I think it's a good thing for us to support it.
Questions, discussion? Mark?
Sorry about that. I thought you'd wanna lip read me for a while, so, um, just a, a question, um. The, about all of the rationale for this proposal. Could you just clarify that, Bob? What, the reason it was put forward, um, to switch to even numbered years?
Why the New York State Legislature did it?
Right.
There is the stated reason and the unstated reason. The stated reason was they wanted to get more people to vote, to participate in local elections. And by moving it to even numbered years, when voter turnout is greater, because the president's on the ballot and the governor's on the ballot. That more people theoretically would vote for the down ballot issues. That's not a proven fact, but that's just conjecture. What mainly Republicans in Albany say is this is a political move, that it was done by. Democratic operatives to benefit the majority party, because their theory is that more Democrats turn out in those even. Numbered year elections, so that it might spill over to more support down ballot for Democrats. I, I don't see that as being relevant here, because I know. From my standpoint, and probably from the standpoint of everybody here in T-Cog. Local elections really aren't partisan so much as their individual races being fought on individual issues, local issues. And I think that, that just was a misguided effort by Albany politicians to fix something that isn't broken.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, discussion? Other comments, discussion?
Uh, technical question is like, if 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 this change were adopted, um, how does that's, how does that switch over occur? Do you know?
Well, it's it's complex and don't put me on the spot with this, but I think it starts in twenty twenty five. And what would happen is that at some point down the line, not in this year's elections, but maybe beginning in twenty twenty five. If, for example, if Mark, your term was up in twenty twenty five, that you might be serving, I don't know if in Caroline, the supervisor is for two years, for two years. Okay, for two years, that you might have to run again in twenty twenty six. So that would get it on the right cycle.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm up for election this year in twenty twenty three. I don't think I would be affected until if I ran again in twenty twenty seven. All right, then I might serve a three-year term instead of four-year term as a councilperson. I think that's how it works. And I'll tell you that as of an hour before this meeting, I checked and the bill had not yet been presented to Governor Hokel for her signature or veto. So it's just as relevant that we weigh in and now than two months ago when we tabled this measure.
Dan?
Well, I I can't support this measure because I've I've done some research on this myself. And the increased turnout does um validate candidates running for local election. Uh, the the turnout in 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 some of the more urbanized areas that have done this has been upwards to four hundred percent increased uh voter participation in elections for mayor or municipal level government. So you get people elected with a much more uh representative uh portion of the voters, uh, and and you don't have these uh elections where just eighteen percent or ten percent of uh, local voters turn out in odd years. And those tend to be skewed towards older, wider property owners as opposed to the broader coalition of people that turn out in even year elections. So as a a way to get a broader mandate and representation in elections, uh, it's best to be elected by more people who will see and pay attention to your campaigns. Off-year elections, just don't do that. So that's why there's been this movement. There are all sorts of other reasons that are being applied to it, uh, and mostly, you know, trying to politicize the move. But the data shows that this is actually a way to um empower voters more and to get uh greater participation in elections. So I'm in favor of moving these, uh, New York has more elections than any other state. When you look at the elections that we have for school board, with the elections we have for village races, it's it's overwhelming. And when you have so many races, voters just get um voter fatigue. And so there there are reasons to do this, and there are also economic reasons. It's unfortunate that we can't move these other state constitutional positions like clerks and sheriffs uh and in the into the same cycle that would take uh an amendment to the constitution. And maybe that's going to happen down the road, uh, but I don't think that should stop us from inching towards this reform.
Other comments? Cynthia? Oh, and then Robert will give you a chance to respond. Cynthia?
Well, I would just say that from my personal experience, um, I I do fear that in a community such as ours, down ticket elections, that our issues would get lost if all of the bandwidth is really focused on national issues. Uh, people will tend to think on very broad issues. They won't be thinking so um granularly on how local representatives will be campaigning on how their issues pertain to their, the things around them. I think that it will get lost in the national fervor. That's where the money is. That's where the attention will go. Um, I I'm definitely seeing it here in in Ithaca in that way, really getting caught up on on uh state and national campaigns and losing track of the role of, you know, the highway superintendent and the clerk and the city council person and so on. Um, I I do recognize, especially in a place like Ithaca, uh, I have always attributed to our low voter turnout for the fact that we we do have such a rotation of people that they register to vote in a presidential election and then have moved several times, you know, between when the the local election comes up. And so you see a very low turnout of registered voters because a majority of those people are gone. Um, I I hear what you're saying, Dan. I mean, definitely the participation is there. And if I think if if the participation is the only measure that we're looking at, I'm I would definitely agree with you, but I don't know that it's going to lead to better government when you're getting people out there because they're driven by national politics, but not necessarily well-informed of local elections. So um, I'm I'm with Robert on this and I will um support his resolution.
Uh, Robert, we'll we'll see what other comments are and then we'll come back to you, okay? Uh, Don?
Uh, there's the old saying, if it if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And no one has shown me where the system's not working or it needs fixing. Uh, mostly they're doing this to benefit someone somewhere and and it's not us. So I I'm not in favor of them changing the elections.
Okay, Robert. Oh, wait, Joel?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with Cynthia here. The um increasing participation, um, unless the it the increased, the increased number of participants is but isn't takes goes to the trouble of informing themselves about the issue. Uh, it simply uh makes it's it makes the outcome more subject to the 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 vagaries of of, you know, party. I think um that the, you know, absent uh being informed on the issues, um, people will tend to vote for their party, which, you know, as as was suggested by Robert, you know, it probably may have some underlying, um, you know, just reason for 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 this big change being proposed at the state level. Um, and I'm and I and I say that as a member of the majority party, they would probably benefit from it. But the, I don't know that that we would be any better off uh, uh, with a with a un- a larger pool of uninformed people deciding the outcome of the elections at at the local level. Uh, I'd rather, I'd rather have a uh, an informed group, however large it is, um, you know, voting on 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 who who to who to put in office. And I think that that, you know, it's incumbent upon us who are who are in the position of running for these offices to to try to get the word out to folks for why they ought to support us um and and motivate them to get to the polls as opposed to riding on the, you know, on the coattails of those who are running it for higher office. So I so I support the uh the resolution.
Any other hands up, Robert? We'll come back to you. Robert, do you know that uh Association of Towns weighed in on this?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know. And that one of the uh parties to be copied by this resolution would be the Association of Towns. They may have weighed in on it, but I'm not aware of it. And uh, I have very little else to say. Cynthia said it so eloquently and Don and Joel, they all weighed in and I support what they stand for. There's one other thing I'll mention. It's a going to be a petitioning nightmare in even numbered years. Can you, most of us have gone out and petitioned for uh ourselves and for other candidates of our party on the ballot. Can you imagine going out and having to petition for Congress, for state senate, for state assembly, for a judicial nomination, for maybe a a local judge? And also for town supervisor, town council person, maybe several, uh, town highway superintendent, town clerk. As um, our 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 Groton uh, county legislature, Lee Shirtluff said, this is going to be in the middle of winter. You're lucky if you're not going to be hit with a snowshoe when you go up to somebody's door and ask them to sign that many petitions. I I think this is just as as Don said, it's, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Are we ready? Oh, Caitlin?
So the only thing I would say is that I would caution my colleagues to be very mindful of our history of voting and the many restrictions that were placed on voting and the idea of us saying we want certain type of people to vote, be informed versus the masses who may not be informed. That makes me start to, you know, my hackles actually go up a little bit to that because I think it's our duty as elected officials or those who are running for office to do our best to get our information out. And it's hard. It's hard when we don't have news media who's interested necessarily in covering our issues. It's uh, it's challenging to do. Um, but that being said, uh, you know, just just be mindful of the history of, well, it used to be, uh, not even aside from racial issues, obviously, which were important in limiting the right to vote. But the idea that we only wanted property owners because they understood, right? They 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 had a vested financial stake, um, or people who are literate. Only literate people should be allowed to vote. So just just keep that in mind that we have a history of, um, in this country of suggesting certain people should be voting. And I wouldn't want us to fall accidentally into territory. We're only saying that we want informed people um voting because, you know, I'm seeing the town of Ulysses has a election uh for a couple of board seats this fall, as I know many of you do. And I've heard people who routinely vote and who care about their community are like, there's no contested elections. I'm not even going to bother to show up. So even so, like, these are people who actually know what's going on. And I wish that they would show up just to, even if it's un-uncontested. I wish they would show up to demonstrate that their, you know, their involvement and their civic participation. But because there's nothing else on the ballot, they're not showing up. So I don't know if you're really necessarily getting um a representative slot in that situation either. So I I would just like to throw that out there. I'm actually going to to vote with Dan on this. I I think that um that more people voting is actually a metric that we should be leaning towards.
Uh, Cynthia?
Yeah, thank you, Caitlin, and I and you raise a really, really important point, um, and I I share your concerns. Um, my my concern is is just a little bit different, but I'm very sensitive to what you're saying. Um, I I think what is so difficult right now is that there is so much money being spent on ups up-ticket races that for down-ticket races, you just cannot compete in terms of messaging, in terms of getting the issues out, getting the bandwidth because of just the all of of the messaging that happens on the up-ticket race. And so then I think as a down-ticket person, your only recourse to even get attention at all is then to attach yourself to something else. Because there's just so much bandwidth that people can handle. And and so you'll be judged based on these up-ticket races, not so much on your stance on what's happening in your region, in your community, and how you're addressing local issues. It's just, it's so hard to compete. Um, and so that's I I think in terms of um involvement and sensitivity, um, having that that broad range of interests, being able to differentiate between individuals, regardless of their party, um, is is a challenging one in this day and age. Um, but I understand your concerns.
Dan?
Well, I would just say, you know, for us to say the system isn't broken is is kind of rich because we got elected by this system. And so therefore it must be good. Uh, I I just think there's there's more to it than that. And um, and I don't think that we can make the argument that voters uh will pay equal attention in an off-year election as a uh even-year election. And and that's been our challenge. And that's really at the heart of why this um uh proposal passed the legislature was because, you know, people are tuned out in odd years. And in even years, and I've run a lot of campaigns and I've 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 done, you know, tickets like this and and gotten out and spoken about each candidate. You get people while they're paying attention. The fact is, in the odd years, people tune out elections and they particularly tune out local elections. And if we're getting elected by eighteen percent, fifteen percent of the registered voters, to me, that's a broken system. If we're getting elected by one demographic overwhelmingly, you know, which is an older, wider demographic, that's a broken system. If we want participation, if we want to do the outreach to uh the full uh spectrum of voters that are out there, then we should do it in a more consolidated manner and reach as many people possible and not underestimate the ability of voters to remember which office is which. I mean, we uh vote smart. We do well enough in the even elections to vote for a state legislator, um, a state senator, a governor, a member of Congress, uh, sometimes a president. We can keep all those straight. We can keep a local election straight as well. Uh, and I don't think we should underbit, um, underestimate the voters that much.
Okay, are we ready to vote? So all those in favor of the resolution before us, raise your hand. Uh, and are someone counting at legislative chambers?
Yep, we are.
Okay, are you are you set?
Yep, we are. Thank you.
Uh, those opposed? You you set?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And anyone abstaining? So I believe it carried. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, now moving on to committee reports. Uh, broadband, is there anything more to say?
Um, is that me?
Yes.
Um, no, there's nothing I want to say. I think I think we've covered that today, so.
Uh, Caitlin, cybersecurity?
No updates other than to remind everybody that if you received an email this week to respond to your preferred date for a cyber training course, um, that the county is going to be offering, um, they're looking for dates. I believe it's the fifth and the sixth of December. Um, I'm, we're going to be requesting that there's also a remote option because that it seems appropriate that there might be. So I'm going to talk to the county to see. I've talked to Bridget. Um, if there there might be a remote option for people to attend as well. But but get your, get your, get your vote in for a time and and the people who can attend, um, if you as you have an audience.
Okay. Uh, emergency planning and preparedness, is there more to say on that?
I don't think there is. I think um I lead the discussion during um Lisa's presentation um covered, covered where we're at. And um, so I think our committee will be um diving in or or working on the the questions that were raised about, you know, um, cost sharing. And I I believe that um I I uh Mike mentioned to me that I guess I think Lisa's found there are a bunch of counties that are doing this now. So um, so we'll be working on it. Finding out what other places, how they're doing it and um.
Okay, uh, energy committee has not met, so there's no report there. Transportation?
Nothing really to report, other than the fact that uh since our last meeting, TK has implemented, or at least is in the process of implementing its new Fairbox system. And uh, the Fairbox system is, I guess, working. There were some glitches, but the fact is they didn't have to go to any kind of a fare-free holiday or anything like that. They said that's not a part of their business plan. So that's where transportation stands.
And water quality? I don't even know if we have a committee. Oh, Cynthia, you you represent lots of different.
I represent lots of things. I do not have a a report.
Okay, um, our next meeting, someone remind me, when is our next meeting? I I think it's a, does it follow the usual schedule?
I think the usual schedule would be uh Thanksgiving, so it's got to be moved. And I forget what it's moved to. Maybe.
Taylor should know.
Yeah, it's December seventh.
December seventh, and I know that we I think we're starting to populate some agenda items, partly because um some folks who were going to, I think there was going to be a report on the food uh, food policy, the county's food initiative. I think that got moved to December. I believe that Jay Franklin was going to make a report, so my guess is that's been moved to December.
He can't make it then either.
Oh, okay. Is there anything else like that that we know that's going to be on the agenda? Mark?
Right, I have a a question. I I the the. The Haley Delisle's work on work on the EV station proposal. I thought, yeah, is is.
I think that's one of the ones that's going to be in December as well. I think it's on the checklist. Is that correct?
Yep, that's the only one that I have written down so far.
Okay. You might want to, I thought there was something from Don Barber. That got moved to a future meeting. Okay, anything else that folks want to make sure, you know, and certainly things may. Arise over the next few weeks. But anything else to make note of right now for that December meeting?
We may want to comment on the what happened when they got the RFPs back on the broadband.
So, yeah, I think if we. Invite Nick back to report on on that, that would be very helpful.
Is that what we would want to be considering officers for next year?
Yeah, yes. I think that I think Joe, Gordon and I have to. Get together and I I forget how it happens, but yes, thank you, Mark. We'll look into what that looks like. Because next year it will be Joel and Warden, so I think we have to identify, never remember the right term, but sort of the next in line. Since Warden will be moving up and I'll be stepping off as a leadership position. Anything else?
Three at four, the next meeting, but I'm hoping that we can have the county come back to talk about. All the sessions they've been doing on code and code enforcement. And find out, because there's been a lot of workshops and things and and find out where the status of that is.
Yeah, if we can probably have in Darby come back and give us an update would make sense for December as well. Anything that folks want to mention before we end the meeting today?
All set. Thank you.
Looks like we're ready to adjourn, so we're adjourned at four thirty-four. Have a good evening.
Great. Brad, have a good night. Thanks, everybody.